Welcome back, everybody. We are gonna go ahead and move forward into our interview for Board of Trustees. Uh, for the Timberland Regional Library. Let me just make sure I have, uh. Is Nicole on the line?
Yes, I am.
There you are. Hi, welcome Nicole. Hi, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna move right into the interview. What we're going to do is we have your information in front of us. We have some simple questions that we have for you. There is no right answer. There's no wrong answer. You can make it as a uh, long or as brief. We appreciate the brief as you feel that it's necessary. Uh, so with that being said, I will ask a question, then another commissioner, then another, and you will have the opportunity to ask us questions in the end. Are you ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, uh, Shuti, if you would like to take number one. Commissioner Trask, I'll take number three, and then Shuti again and Trask for the final.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, first off, good morning, Nicole. Good to have you with us this morning. Uh, our first question for you is, what do you see is the function of the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees?
Um, I see the role of the trustees as, um, ensuring fiscal responsibility, um, of the executive director. Ensuring that policies are updated and are followed. And also being, um, a liaison between the appropriate county and T R L itself.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, why do you, welcome Nicole, and why do you want to sit on the board?
I have loved libraries as, uh, as long as I can remember. Um, I was raised by a single father in Los Angeles, and every weekend we went to the library. It wasn't close. But he always managed to fit in trips, and I would check out as many books as they let me. Um, and when I moved to Belfair, um, I was married to somebody in the Navy. And we were stationed here. I stepped up as the library technician at Belfair Elementary School. And, um, it was, it was just such a blessing to be able to work in that position and get to know students and their families. Um, especially not being from Washington. It was just a great place. Um, and I'm not sure why I didn't get my degree in library science. I'm starting to wonder why. Um, but I just, I mean, I still, I would take my kids to all the events at the North Mason branch. We just have such a wonderful library here. So many things that are offered that I don't think our community knows about. And so I just, um, I'm just so proud of T R L of North Mason, and I just want to share my knowledge and skills and share, um, again, the wonderful offerings and programs that the library has to the community.
So this appointment is for seven-year term. The board meets the fourth Wednesday in the evening and typically outside of Mason County. Will this be an issue for you?
No, it will not.
And do you have any conflicts of interest with the mission of this advisory board?
I don't believe so. Um, I'm currently an employee of the Olympia School District. And I am a North Mason School District Director. Um, but I don't see either of those as conflicting. I actually see it more as complementing.
Yeah, excellent.
All right, and the final question, do you have any questions for us?
Um, I believe, um, I apologize, I don't remember her last name. Mackenzie had sort of sent me a timeline. But could you just confirm, um, what the process is from here on out?
Randy, you wanna take that one?
Go ahead. So the, the, the process actually varies. Uh, it's gonna be up to the commission. Quite often what we do is we wait, we interview all the different people, and we give back you in a few weeks and we, we let you know. Uh, but at the same time, it could go even today if the commission decided to, uh, to move forward and put it on to an agenda. It's up to them. It's nothing set. But at the very latest, you would hear in the next few weeks, uh, how the process will go through. And in the end, it has to be done through an action of the commission during a regular business meeting.
Also, I think the, uh, I think the current trustee's term expires at the end of this year. Um, so any, any decision, any, any appointment would be, I think, from the end of that term point forward, so.
Yes.
Think that's important to note for folks that are listening to.
Right. Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you have any other questions or anything?
Nope, that was it.
All right. Thank you so much for coming to join us today. Very much appreciated your answers.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great week.
You too. Uh, Commissioners, uh, you wanna just keep moving forward for the moment, or you wanna have a discussion right now?
Yeah, I know we have one, one other applicant, so, um, we can just move forward and would be great.
And, and that's what we will do. All right. Uh, we only have the one applicant interview today, correct? Well, I have. Is anybody else out there? Nope. All right, the next we are going to move to the B C R A, DJ Dean.
Commissioners, um, this is our team that actually analyzed, uh, used the money that we received from the legislature to analyze our, our jail needs. Uh, moving forward, and so we've been meeting over the last, gosh, has it been? Probably seven months now, and we had quite a team that were involved in the discussions with B C R A. And they had taken their draft report and sent it out to you, so hopefully you've had an opportunity to look through that and see that. Uh, and they're here to present it to the commission today. So Jeff or DJ, DJ, are you gonna lead this?
Uh, I think Jim's gonna kick it off here for us.
Okay, great, thank you.
As long as I can share my screen, is that acceptable? Let me see. Yeah, okay, I will do that once, uh, Jim kicks us off here.
Okay, well, um, good morning, Commissioners. I'm just gonna make a couple of high-level comments on our process. So, you know, earlier this year, we were asked by Mason County to, um, to study the development of a criminal, uh, uh, community justice campus, um, on the, the current side of the jail. Um, so this, this included an updated jail, uh, with mental health and S U D services available, uh, inside the jail to incarcerated individuals, and also the development of a new uh, behavioral health, uh, S U D facility just south of the jail. Um, and the, the goal was to create a, a campus that could potentially share, share resources. Um, and so as Mark said, you know, we embarked on an eight-month process. This included visioning sessions, um, uh, an assessment of the existing jail. We reviewed the existing mental health and S U D programs. Um, we did multiple workshops. Uh, we reviewed uh, lead sustainability options, um, and discussed, um, you know, staffing at both the jail and the behavioral health facility and opportunity to, to share resources. We also looked at the population of the jail, uh, and trends. Um, we looked at some examples, uh, from across the country and across the state for the jail and behavioral health, um, to, to inform our study. So the results is this report, um, and, um, let's see, so DJ, are you sharing? Maybe, yeah, so this, this is sort of our final, uh, build-out, uh, recommendation. Uh, and we'll talk, um, a, a little bit more in detail, but just a high level. There's, uh, some additions and, um, improvements to the jail. Uh, and then a new, a new behavioral health facility to the, to the south. And I think with that, maybe we could go, go to Jeff, and maybe you could talk a little bit further about the jail.
Sounds great. Thanks, Jim. Good morning, everyone. Um, it's been a great opportunity, I know, as a team to get to know everyone and kind of think about your uh, buildings, your, your community, and, and how maybe something like this can better, better improve what you've got going on. So a couple of things that Jim mentioned that we did accomplish that started to inform, uh, this final recommendation. Uh, we did conduct a, uh, uh, facility assessment of your current jail, and so part of that was to look at uh, mechanical systems, finishes, uh, structural systems. Um, just overall and generally envelope of the exterior, those types of things. And in through doing that, that started to inform kind of the, kind of the ideas of of the renovation and or where additions may make some sense. So one of the things that we found through the, uh, assessment was the portion there that has programs and alternative sentencing in that area that's being highlighted by DJ. Uh, actually, it, it does not currently meet the seismic requirements, um, that the state of Washington has. So that's part of the reason why we identified that as an area that, that maybe made some sense, uh, to engage uh, uh, an addition to the space, um, would allow for bringing that area up to speed as it relates to seismic as well as mechanical and those types of things. So just some things that we started to think through, not to say this has to be the final solution. But it, it started to make some sense and Lewis spending dollars maybe on bringing that area up to seismic code. Maybe we could do something that actually, uh, enhanced the area. Um, the other thing that we did is we did quite a bit of data analysis in our group and thought about um, population as it related to your current needs, but also your community. So we spent some time on that as well. Uh, we looked at it from the full housing analysis perspective, and then the intake assessment. So we looked at behavioral health and housing needs. So your current facility and your current staff do a medical screening piece. So that was actually really helpful to us to be able to look at that, analyze that, and then that, that informed us of kind of what what might make some sense on the mental health and behavioral health side. Um, we also looked at and understood that you were housing out of county, and part of that's because of the fact that, um, you, your staffing, uh, is not completed at this time. So we were able to kind of look at that as well. So what you're gonna see in the report is the idea that although w- we're gonna recommend a certain bed count as it relates to not just, uh, mental health and behavioral health, but we're also providing that or thinking that you would staff back up to your need of twenty-six, which would then allow you to continue to use your current facility. Um, as th- those housing, uh, areas can open back up. So that's part of our analysis that we looked at there. Um, that, that was part of the recommendation, um, as part of what we were thinking at the end of the day. So let me talk a little bit about what we anticipated, both from the addition side as well as from the renovation side. So we recognized some of the things that, uh, for instance, the Sally Board and some of the other entities and, and items that you had within the building, um, maybe in a place that might not be as, uh, the, may, maybe not the most, uh, right space to be. So we thought about that a little differently. Uh, in some of what we were trying to accomplish, to allow for a little bit better transition from both the staff perspective as well as from a perspective of moving in custody folks through. Uh, we thought about the kitchen and administration area. So although the kitchen and administration area are doing well for what you currently have, as you add additional beds, there might be a need for additional kitchen equipment and or, uh, additional laundry, just because medical and behavioral health, uh, can be a little laundry-heavy, uh, on that side. So just thinking about that a little differently. And then the orange and green space that you see that's, uh, down to the south portion there. Yeah, so the area DJ's looking at, they're highlighting, that's the behavioral health and mental health housing piece uh, diagrammed out. So that would include eight, uh, acute care beds, uh, eight substance use and disorder uh, withdrawal management detox beds, and then eight, uh, uh, mental health and step-down beds. Um, and then we would increase, uh, the behavioral staff support, uh, through, uh, interview and small group program rooms in that area. So we would anticipate that those have those types of spaces there, so especially, uh, uh, in particular for those types of, uh, individuals that might be, uh, in that portion of the facility. Um, Jim mentioned a little bit, we'll talk a little bit, uh, later about the idea of, uh, staffing. But recognize that this is a, uh, since it is an addition. Um, although we, we understand there's some need here from a staffing perspective. Well, the staffing may not be as large as, as what you may anticipate, uh, based on kind of what we're showing. And then lastly, we did incorporate in the programming, uh, some large multipurpose program rooms, um, and indoor rec room. Some small multipurpose rooms and some classroom space, and then some pre-trial program and staff support. So the idea behind that is those are things that I know as we talked with staff and we talked through this project with the multitude of stakeholders. There's not a lot of opportunity right now to do some of the programs and some of the things that I think would be really helpful at the end of the day to get folks that are coming back out on the street or uh, those types of in, uh, uh, different programs that may be out there. There's not a lot of space for that. There's one room currently, and it's also used for your video visitation, uh, or not video visitation or video court. So those things we wanted to incorporate in this space that allows for counseling, clinical conversations and screening, those types of things, as well as from a programs perspective. So trying to, again, think about it holistically. I do want to share one other thing before we, uh, dive into the behavioral health piece. Our team as a collective group looked at a multitude of options. Uh, so this is the one that we think uh, provides the best opportunity down the road long-term. It also provides some opportunity to do some things today. Um, from the standpoint of maybe some short-term gap stops, uh, from the standpoint of maybe you take one of your housing units that's currently not in use. And you transform that, uh, in a way, shape or form to be, uh, mental health or behavioral health. Um, be, be, and you kind of do a trial piece, wire, uh, tracking down funding and other things, do the rest of the work. But there's some ways to do this and step through this process a little bit, so that you may not have to take on the whole chunk at one time, um, although taking on the whole chunk may actually uh, solve a lot of your issues i- in a shorter timeframe. There's a long-term, uh, window there that, that might be helpful as well. DJ?
Okay, I think we'll turn it over to Jim and talk about the behavioral health. Uh, Jim, you're on mute, I think.
Yes, I was on mute, so you guys missed some really cool stuff. Uh, so, um, the behavioral health building, uh, just just kind of at a high level, um, it's, uh, it, 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 we looked at a model that Pierce County built, uh, that, that we had designed, that we thought would, would fit this project, uh, as well. Uh, but it, it consists of two, two day rooms. So this is sixteen-bed facility. I think we, we landed about, uh, ten thousand square feet. Um, so it, it's sixteen beds. They're all single rooms. All the rooms open out into a day room. And it's, there's, there's two zones. There's a four-bedroom zone kind of in the upper right there, where, and then the other twelve bedrooms are, are, are down below. Um, and the, the, the separation gives some flexibility so that populations can be separated or, uh, separated by acuity, or you can separate by program. Um, we, you know, in our discussions, it was identified that crisis stabilization was a big need within the county. But, um, in surveying the, you know, how crisis stabilization has been doing in the state. Um, you know, Pierce County has closed a couple of, of, of units, so the reimbursements are not quite there yet, um, and it's, it's a little bit of an evolving situation, but our our recommendation is that this facility have four crisis stabilization beds, and then the other twelve beds would, um, provide twelve acute withdrawal management. And then we also just designed in the ability for some potential future uh, outpatient o- options, kind of where those services are identified, so it would be possible for uh, some, some potential outpatient treatment programs, uh, in, in, in the future if that was, um, desired. Uh, the, the building's really designed to be flexible and you know, the same staff that could supervise the twelve beds can supervise the four beds. Yeah, so that's a high level, um, of the behavioral health facility. Um, I think Stacy was gonna talk now about, uh, staffing.
Yeah, from the staffing standpoint on the, the jail side, it's important to recognize as a part of our plan, because those are your ongoing operational costs and considerations. Uh, for a jail, it is important in developing your staffing plan to consider the type of supervision, your in-movement practices, um, what technologies such as cameras do you have in place? And any policy and procedures, those can all impact a jail staffing plan. And while our scope wasn't to, uh, detail out a full-fledged staffing plan, we did utilize information that was distributed to us when we first walked through and met with the jail staff. And this indicated their, um, current staffing levels, where they have an average daily population of thirty people right now, thirty in custody. Um, but as a part of this plan, it also included when the capacity is up to eighty, what are those staffing needs? Um, and using the same shift relief factor that was a part of that plan that we received. Um, the eighty ADP, or your average daily population, um, had twenty-six full-time employees. And that's just under the funded twenty-seven positions. With the proposed ex- expansion that Jeff shared, so that was a total of, uh, twenty-four behavioral health beds within the jail itself, that would increase your, uh, staff positions up to thirty-two. And this is because we're providing a, an additional correctional officer post, um, within that addition. And that equates to, uh, approximately five full-time employees. And we identified on the, uh, non-correctional or your non-relief post, that you would have an, an additional medical health, a medical behavioral health professional in that position or in that, uh, expansion as well. So you're having two twenty-four-seven staff members in the addition that we proposed. Um, and then DJ, I don't know if you wanna pull back up, but on page seventy-five, that indicates the staffing plan that we do have for the jail. It shows the additional posts that are provided and where they would be located. And so that's where you can see the, and the expansion that Jeff talked through with our behavioral health, that all, that those, uh, two and a half positions would be, um, in addition to what you're currently funded for, uh, with a full population of eighty. Uh, the other thing that I would note is the one that is dashed, any dashed, um, circle, if you wanna zoom into the behavioral health uh, expansion, just as a scenario, um, go down to where the ex, ex, housing expansion is. That's indicating a position that would supplement the two, um, twenty-four-seven posts that we have. And that is an example of a position that could potentially be shared with the out-of-custody behavioral health, um, center. And, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Tasha, and then we can talk through, um, what that could look like. But it's essentially showing that there could be a shared, uh, staff position between the jail and the, uh, behavioral health center.
Thank you. Um, DJ, I guess if you wanna go to uh, Jim covered a lot of what I was gonna cover already, so we could skip down to page.
If you don't mind, I wanna ask a question real quick, uh, so Stacy.
Yeah, you bet.
Uh, you're, when you're, I understand what you're saying. I just wanna re-verify what you're saying is, uh, two to two and a half positions, full-time. So we're actually talking about, if it's two and a half positions, fifteen F T E's positions on the budget.
Yeah, so the, and we, we have several tables in the report. It does depend on the, when it's a full post relief position, that, that, yes, that would one post would equate to the five full-time employees. And then, um, you have the medical behavioral health professional staff position. So that isn't considered that you're a correctional post, but as a medical behavioral health professional, that, that would also be a twenty-four-seven post. So yes, you're right, that would equal the, um, five additional staff. And then it's this other position with the, the dashed circle where that, there is the potential for, say, um, sharing.
So that, instead of five, that'd be two and a half. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Tasha, go ahead.
No, no, no problem. Um, DJ, in terms of sharing, we can probably skip to page eighty, um, if, if you're able to. So as Jim mentioned, um, because, um, because the demand on crisis services is there, but potentially not as, as high to as would be needed to, to support a standalone, um, crisis facility. We did a survey of what, what services were most in need that we could pair with the crisis services to make the behavioral health building and the, and the programs there uh, make more financial sense. And that's where the, um, withdrawal management, acute withdrawal management, um, also referred to as detox made sense. Um, so these numbers here in terms of the staffing and operations costs for the behavioral health building reflect just what's going on in that building, just, just to make sure everyone, um, is clear on that. And we have the average daily cost per resident at about six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Um, and Jim referred to the reimbursement cost there, um, as not having basically crisis, crisis care is not a mature reimbursement model, and Medicaid is still working on that. And we also have, it seems like a subs- enough of a uninsured population in Mason County that we would wanna make sure that, um, we, we accounted for that, which we did in our financial model. Um, so if we go to the next page, you'll see what the staffing plan is for the standalone behavioral health facility. Um, and you'll see there, and because a lot of these services are, 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 there's mandated staffing. Um, we, um, we need to have a kind of a full complement of staff. It's not as easy to, um, to layer these in slowly. Um, but basically, we're looking at about twenty-four full-time equivalents a ye- a week. Um, or a total for forty hours a week for each, um, full-time equivalent. Um, we, so that's an average of one point five F T Es per bed. Um, and this kind of breaks out what the shifts would be. We also have, what we did do is on the administrative and other support services. You can see that we've, um, separated those out. The, so the clinical staff is at the top, the administrative and other support staff is at the bottom. And our hope is that because these are partial F T Es, um, there could be potentially some sharing across facilities. Whether that's with the jail facility and the med- medical director, or, you know, for example, on the I T systems, accounting, billing. You know, that there might be some sharing with, with, um, other county resources. Overall, the, this, um, we talk about the operations costs, but also talk on page eighty-four about, um, about funding considerations. Um, on the positive side of things, the Commerce Department has, um, well-allocated behavioral health funding to build the new behavioral health facilities. Which would be something that you would wanna consider and leverage. Um, kind of on the flip side of that, uh, reimbursements have not necessarily kept up in the substance use disorder space. Certainly, they are not on par with mental health. Um, reimbursements, and then kind of the subset of crisis, um, care is still a maturing model, as, as Jim referred to. So, um, on, you know, on the funding side of things, it'll be important to kind of keep, keep track of what's going on on the um, as Medicaid evolves its crisis care. Also important to just be lobbying our state legislatures around um, making sure that there's parity and reimbursements for mental health and S U D services. Um, so those are the things I'll highlight. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, wanna talk, uh, costs?
Is there money for, uh, is there actual money for staffing these things out there that we'd be able to get that reimbursement from?
Well, ream, what, the way we built the staffing model was, and I would have to pull it up to remember what, what I assumption I made on Medicaid coverage, but we assumed that, I think it was approximately eighty percent um, of your, of the people that, that use the facility would have some type of insurance coverage. Um, that, that, you know, uninsured is typically covered by your, um, crisis, you know, the, the B H A S O dollars, and we know that those are tight right now. Um, right now, I mean, Jim referred to it, the Pierce County Crisis Community Crisis Center closed because it was not, um, it was not able to make ends meet, but they also didn't have the withdrawal, um, management built into that model. So our hope was So our hope was that by building the withdrawal management into the model, that we provided some type of, kind of a, a shared, kind of a, a shared revenue streams. But the reality is, no, we do not have reliable models for crisis services. In fact, you know, what's happening in King County, which we looked at, is being covered by local county, county funding. So that's, you know, that's, that's the thing to really be talking to our legislators about in terms of on the state side of things.
And if we were to bill and get paid for the medical aspect of it, how much of the $636 per day that you're showing for an actual cost do you think they would be reimbursing?
It shows in the financial model, I'd say it was between 350 and 400. So there's definitely a gap there.
All right. And it's pretty common, Randy, that there's, the, the other entities are experiencing those same things. I think the challenge that we have is that when we look at Mason County as a whole and say, what services do we have available to help individuals with that withdrawal management? There's none that really exists within our county, and so individuals have to go outside of our county.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, and I see the same thing. My question is just looking at the dollars at the end, how much is it going to cost us? And we're basically looking at probably 350, if all things go well, 350 per day to house and, and help each individual. I have to, I'm just looking budget-wise.
Yep.
Yeah, we are. I think the key then is to compare that against the hospital costs or where else they're ending up, right? I mean, it's.
Except for I don't, I don't pay for the hospital cost.
Exactly, exactly, no, exactly. I mean, this is the, this is the challenge. I totally understand where you're coming from.
But we do pay for them if they actually enter our jail facility, right? So.
Okay, we want to talk project costs. I'll turn over to Jim and hop to that.
Yeah, so we, we did some cost study of the options that we studied. And the expansion off option that Jeff discussed had a construction cost of 20.7 with a total project cost of 28 million. Just to compare, we did study, well, what if, what if you were to totally replace the jail? And that had a construction cost estimate at 52.6 million and a project cost of 71. The, the behavioral health facility, we looked at a couple of configuration options. They didn't have a price impact, but the, the construction for that facility would be 13.3 and a project cost of 18 million. So I think with, with that, I think we're wanting to open it up for, for a Q and A if there are other questions.
Commissioners.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks to the team for presenting on this really interesting ideas. And it looks like a lot of discussion happened to put this together, so appreciate that. At any point, did you all study what it would look like if we went to a full outsourcing model for our, for our jail population? So if we were to partner with another county like Thurston County, for example, on attending inmates there, we pay about $5 million a year to operate our jail. And just wondering if there was any discussion about the economy of, you know, the economics essentially of outsourcing?
We did not. That's a great question. We have looked at that in other entities and other counties. And I can tell you that, I can't tell you what your numbers would be. We could maybe talk through that, if that's something you'd like us to look at. There's a ton of transportation costs because the folks that get brought to your facility through booking and intake, because that still needs to happen, the assessment still has to happen. And then you, you're able to take them and, and partner with someone else. Those, those things can occur, and we could look at that if that's something that would make some sense to you. But at this point, we have not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm speaking purely on the, on the criminal justice side of things, not on the behavioral health side of things. I think, I'm not sure that the county should be in the business of operating and building a behavioral health facility. I sit on the Thurston-Mason BHASO board, been the chair of that for the past few years. And we've looked at all kinds of models to provide crisis stabilization and detox. And, and the, the point that I think is at the, sort of the center of that part of the conversation is, unless the county is willing to make up that gap between the reimbursement rates and the true costs, it's going to be very, very difficult for us to manage a behavioral health facility when we already frankly are struggling to staff an incarceration facility. And so I'm cycling off the commission here in a couple of months. So this will be something that, you know, I'm not going to see come to a conclusion in terms of what that facility looks like into the future. But I think the county needs to be really thoughtful about the way we approach both sides of that equation. And I think it's done predominantly through partnership, unless the county is going to be able to, you know, figure out that funding source. So just curious if that was any part of the conversation on the incarceration side previously. And this will tell you how, you know, this, this flags how long I've been here. We're on my second jail study of my tenure on the commission. And so, you know, initially, we had looked at a regional option with, with Grace Harbor County. That didn't obviously pan out for a, a couple of reasons, but didn't know if that was, if there was a full outsourcing model that was, that was considered, since we are relying on that so much at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, Kevin kind of stole my, my question as well. Thanks, Kevin. But I would, I would love to, to see, because there's got to be other options out there also. I know the entire state's having a hard time finding employees or staff. And honestly, I, I don't have the personality to, to work in a jail, nor have a desire. But I know that there are special people out there that, that, that do have that, that skill and that interest. We just have to find them, right? But as far as the, the mental health, that's, that's definitely one of my biggest concerns. And I know it is with other counties also. But if, I don't know, how long would it take to do a study or to go out and see how much it would cost? I've talked to other commissioners, especially like in Thurston County, and they would absolutely be willing to, to work with us. So if, if, if that's something that the other commissioners maybe are interested in, that's, that's something that I'd like to take a look at.
We'd be more than happy to take a look at that. I think from a timing perspective, I'd have to, have to spend a little bit of the time thinking about it and then give you a better response. I don't want to be a guy who tells you, give me 30 days, because I do that a lot and then I don't turn around. So I do think if that's something you're interested in, there's some additional data we would need from you guys as it relates to transportation and those types of things, staff numbers cost-wise, because that's, that's the other piece when you start to pull these together. It's not just about the bricks and mortar, I like to call it. It's, it's the dollars that you're spending from a staff perspective, transportation and those types of things that really start to add up at the end of the day. And to your point, it may be that you're down to, and again, I don't hold me to these numbers, but maybe that you're down to 10 people, right, or 10 staff folks or, or 12 staff folks or 15 staff folks in lieu of your current need of 26, right? So the idea is, is can you consolidate that a little bit more? But we'd be more than happy to help and, and look at that holistically, if that's something you guys would like. And we've done that in the past, and I, I hear you loud and clear. We've heard that from other smaller communities as well, and I don't mean that in a bad way. It's just that you come to a point where it's like, how much, how much dollars do I want to spend, right, in my own community? I would share this as it relates to behavioral health and mental health and incarceration types, types of scenarios. The folks that are in that type of situation, being in your own community is actually a good thing, because normally that means you have family, you have people you know and what have you that are coming and visiting you. So that's part of, that's part of the conversation too, is how does that integrate with taking the incarceration po, po, sorry, the incarceration piece of this and moving it out of county? What's that do from that perspective as well? And just the perception too, as it relates to that. So I just share those things, but we could, we could look at that and come back with a, with a, with an idea and a thought and put all that together in one, one package if you so chose.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested in doing that. I mean, right now, we are removing or we're taking people out of county because, you know, that's what we have to do. We, we really don't have a choice. And so I would like to go ahead and take a look at that also. I mean, I, I don't want to separate families, but sometimes reality is that's what we have to do.
Right. Well, let us get together as a group, and we'll get back with Mark on that and, and see what we can do from both a schedule perspective, from a schedule perspective, and then what additional data we would need from your team to be able to evaluate that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and are you, and Commissioners, just to clarify, are you talking about the, only the incarceration piece and not the, the withdrawal management crisis stabilization side, Commissioner Shudy?
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, that's where I'm at on the incarceration side. I, I think the, I think the behavioral health side, you know, it's a related conversation, but it's, you know, I don't think those two are mutually exclusive there, so.
Yeah, and I think that the, I think the, the biggest adjacency that we saw there is we really have a need for these services within our current jail already. And being able to have a facility that was located right next door to provide those would give us the opportunity to share some of those staff in both facilities. And so, you know, always looking for alternatives for putting people in jail if, if the, if our law enforcement teams and our, and our, the, the team to go out with law enforcement to address some of these individuals had an opportunity to provide them with an avenue to the non-incarceration route, then, then that was definitely something that we'd love to see. The, the AHO or ASO folks were included in our team here. And I know that they also had similar, had found similar data on the fact that it's, it's really difficult to run one of those facilities with the current reimbursement rates that are out there. So I think it's a challenge that a lot of us are facing, but that doesn't mean that, that we don't need some of those services here.
So I appreciate you guys coming in. I appreciate all the work that you've done. I do think this is an important thing to look at, but I definitely don't think it's baked into what's possible right now. Example, just looking at the basic bare numbers, we have a, we end up servicing 20 people or 20, let's say 21, then I'm, the cost of, of the daily operation of that is the same as our jail, our complete jail right now. That would be a lot for us to take on, if you could imagine. I'm not sure how we would, you know, how we would double the cost that we already have. So with that being said, we have to find ways to get more reimbursements. And, and even then, the amount I just mentioned, the, the $5 million a year, that's not even including the payment for the bond on building the facility. So let alone, let alone the regular, all the other things we're going to have to bring on for the insularious after it's built. That brings up to 17. That's a lot of money to try and pay off, and I'm not sure how to do any of that. But although I do appreciate it, this is where you start. We get this information, we start, and then we start looking for pieces to, to take a bite out of, see what kind of reimbursements we can get, and see if we can get it to a level where it is palatable somehow. But at this moment, I'm not just, I'm just not sure where any of that kind of money would ever come from.
I think there's opportunities for, there's opportunities for grants for building the facilities, Commissioner, but I, I think I share your concern with those ongoing operational costs. And where do we come up with, where do we come up with the, the, the funding to do that annually? You know, without, without actually having to, to try and fund it out of our current resources, which would be pretty expensive to do. So common problem, I think there's a lot of people out there looking for, for potential solutions to that. And hopefully, we would be ways to, to take advantage of them when they start to come up. I mean, there's some programs that they're talking about now, going through our current jail that Dave Wyndham is working on with our, our jail folks to help fund like 90 days worth of this treatment. And so maybe that's going to come, you know, bring, bring additional, at least insight and, and information forward for individuals to help fund the daily operations.
And I agree, but aside from that, even when you're talking about the building, they're not going to pay for the things that we have to put in and stuff, and that's several million that they're talking. And then with our matching funds, we're still looking at trying to come up with an additional $5 million. So it's, it's, the reality is even that part is a big uphill. But again, you have to start somewhere. This is where it starts. So I'm not saying it's can't happen or won't it happen. I'm just trying to bring the reality to the fact of what we have money that can go out in order to do it. There, there's no possible way we'd take on a $5 million burden anyway right now, let alone the burden plus the building and everything else. But we'll continue to have those conversations. Commissioners, any more questions or comments for our guests? Commissioner Shudy, anything else?
Not for me right now, thank you.
Commissioner Trask, anything else?
Yeah, nothing for me right now.
All right, go ahead.
Oh, I said, just thank you for coming.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say as well. Thank you very much for coming in today and briefing us on this. We appreciate you.
Thanks for having us.
And DJ, I'll, I'll circle back with you to kind of scope out what, maybe some additional work that might be done and.
Okay.
We'll go from there.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have the Auditor's Office. Auditor Steve Dunkel, please.
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. I just wanted to bring you an update or give you an update on our, our activity to seek reimbursement under the Secretary of State Information Security Grant. And as of right now, we have been approved for $29,350 for reimbursement against the $80,000 available for fiscal year 2025. And we have put that into additional physical security improvements for the ballot processing room. We've used that money to put surveillance cameras on the remaining ballot drop boxes in the county. So we now have all of our drop boxes covered with 24/7 surveillance video during the election. Also, that includes some surveillance video for security purposes up at the Temporary Vote Center in Belfair. And last but certainly not least, we're including some of that, some of that money for providing for armed security during the election or on Election Day for both the Vote Center here in Shelton and the Temporary Vote Center in Belfair. So I just wanted to bring you guys up to speed on that.
Have you have notices out there that the cameras are there and operating?
Say it again.
Do you have notice? Do you have a signage that tells people that they're being recorded?
We do not. We, we're, we're looking at having that kind of sticker applied to the drop boxes. It says, smile, you're on camera, something such as that, but we have, we don't have that yet.
I would appreciate it personally if you did. I think it's important that they do have notice when they're being recorded, especially by a governmental entity.
Very good.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dunkel?
Good for me.
Hey, Steve, one question real quick. If you were to, if someone wanted to go and look at the cameras on the boxes, where would they go?
On the elections webpage, we have links to all of the surveillance video, both on the drop boxes and for ballot processing operations down in the ballot processing room.
Okay, I am looking right now because I thought that'd be fun to go and see if I could find it. Maybe if you could send us a link so that we could share it with the public, just a quick little link, that might be nice.
Yeah, so I think it's under the Public Records webpage, and you'll find a link to current elections. And you should see a link to the YouTube channels for each of the cameras.
All right, I won't take up more time. I'll, I'll keep looking for it.
I'll show you how to find it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roder.
Thank you.
Have a good day. All right, next up, I have Public Health, Dave Wyndham. Good morning, Dave.
Here we are. Good morning, Commissioners. I didn't speak this morning. We just have one item today, and that will be brought to you by Melissa.
Good morning. I've got an item. We've discussed this a few times in the past.
Good morning. Um, I've got an item. We've discussed this a few times in the past. Uh, you may recall back in June, we received an amendment from the Department of Commerce for an additional five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, as with any amount of money that we have available, we did a competitive RFP process. Um, and we released that to any programs that intersect with our homeless response system. So it went out to our housing providers as well as behavioral health providers. We received four applica- or we've received eight proposals from four agencies, but for six different kinds of programs. Um, the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board made an initial funding recommendation when we first received the applications back in August, I believe. Um, so we've already done an amendment with Shelton Family Center for a hundred and ten thousand dollars to their eviction prevention program. Um, back then, the board needed a little bit more information from the other providers, so we invited them back to do a little bit of an interview and answer some more questions about their proposals. Um, and we now have funding recommendations for the remaining four hundred and two thousand dollars um, that was available. The funding recommendations are for Crossroads Housing's uh, shower program, twelve thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars to their diversion program. Um, so any person who is in need of assistance doesn't necessarily always need rent. Um, sometimes they just need one-time assistance to get somewhere uh, where they can be safely housed. Um, or for certain, um, other resources that are available. Um, as well as seventy-five thousand dollars to their eviction prevention rental assistance program. Uh, the board also recommended that we hold back two hundred thousand dollars that we earmac- arm- that amount um, to administer to programs um, specifically for rental assistance. So there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars remaining in that fund after we've allocated seventy-five thousand dollars to Crossroads. Um, I do want to take a moment just to address the eviction prevention program um, specifically. As we've done our ongoing monitoring uh, that we do for all of our programs, um, we did some fidelity interviews. Um, we've also received um, complaints from people who are a little bit concerned with how long it takes to be assisted by the eviction prevention program. Um, we did find that there were some, there were a lot of inefficiencies. Um, a lot of the complaints were grounded, in fact, and I've been working with a provider over for the last few weeks, we've met several times, to really take a look at their processes and how they're prioritizing people. Um, how they're communicating their program to the public. And we've worked out a system where we're actually monitoring it weekly. Um, and bi- bi-weekly at most. Um, so we can really look at who's on the waitlist. Uh, where are they on the prioritization so that we're actually serving the people who are really at high risk of becoming homeless? Um, I'm really confident that by uh, providing this additional funding, they can operate that program and really help um, the most eminent people that they can, based on about forty-five hundred, I believe, is the average per household. We can serve about twenty more people with the additional funding, twenty more households. Um, so that's for Crossroads Housing. That's for the rental assistance fund. Um, the board also recommends that we hold back a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for facilitator for our, our five-year plan. Uh, this is due in December of twenty twenty-five. It's a, by RCW, it's a requirement for local governments to facilitate this process. Um, it's something that's a little bit out of the capacity for public health to really facilitate. So uh, we have a few leads on um, agencies that might be able to apply for the RFP once we release that. Um, and finally, forty thousand dollars just to have in reserve. Um, emergencies come up throughout the year. Um, as programs begin to spend down towards the end of the viennia, we'd like to have an amount available to be able to allocate via an amendment um, to whatever programs might be in need towards the end of the year. And all the other programs that um, applied were not recommended for funding at this time. So um, we're just looking for approval from, from the board to go ahead and accept these recommendations and develop um, award letters and rejection letters for the agencies. And then we will work on the amendments next. Are there any questions?
Commissioner, Commissioner Trask.
No questions. Excellent job. Um, I like how the money is, is shared. So great job. Thank you.
Commissioner Shudy.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, yeah, just kind of hat tip to Melissa, you and your team on this, and also to the um, Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board, who, who did a lot of late work on this as well, and, and I think brought back to staff a lot of really good questions to kind of really determine where the best use of this funding was gonna be. And so one of the things, Commissioners, that, that we heard um, throughout the process uh, from folks on the advisory board, was just how concerned they are with uh, making sure that the eviction prevention dollars get out the door as quickly as possible. Um, and so I think that's one of the areas aside from this, uh, you know, to really work with our housing providers who have that funding to really make sure that there are as few delays as possible in getting that money into the um, you know, into the, into the um, prevention side of things. Uh, it costs way more uh, when we have to try to find somebody housing after they've gone through the eviction process. And so we want to make sure that those dollars get out the door, but um, something just to flag long-term as we work with our housing providers, but definitely supportive of what staff is presenting here.
I also am supportive. Uh, uh, so I want to clarify. So you're telling me though you are working on uh, moving things through the process quicker, cause that's the same thing I hear all the time. And are you being effective? Is that, is that changing as we speak?
Yes, I worked, we, we, I met the last two weeks with the provider. We actually looked at their log, their waitlist log. We looked at how, what information needs to actually go in there. We changed um, some of the income requirements a little bit so that we can actually focus on those that are most vulnerable. Um, and also looking at the other programs. Um, I think this isn't just eviction prevention. There are other programs that are appropriate for others to be enrolled in. Um, so we're looking at the big picture, but the eviction prevention was really where a lot of the concern was. Um, we had received uh, an, uh, an increasing amount of, of calls from clients who uh, were really concerned with how long it was taking. So we needed to take a look at um, how are they prioritizing people? I think that there are, there were more efficient ways to do that. Um, we've identified that, and we've required that they submit their log to us on a weekly basis so that we're keeping our eyes on it. Um, ongoing and really watching and making sure that the dollars are being spent quickly on those who are ready to be served.
Thank you. So yes, I'm supportive, uh. Is that uh, all you need to mess with the moment?
It is.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, what else you got for us?
That's all I have.
Commissioners, do you have anything for Dave? Nope. Thank you for the ribbon cutting. It was a wonderful event and uh, appreciated all your stuff. And a next special, special thank you to our facilities group. I gotta tell you, I don't think we can make it look better if we're, to be hiring and contracting out these, our folks have really uh, lived up to their ability to do more and more every year. That was a very professional surroundings in that office. I'm proud of you all.
Facilities and, and IT were rock stars.
IT as well, yep. All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, I have Public Works, Loretta Swanson, uh, Utilities and Waste Manager.
Morning, Commissioners. So our first item that we have is an item that should have been pulled. But I'll let Richard give you a quickie explanation and update on that.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Yeah, we're, we're real close. We just need to do some potholing work. I've got conflicting information on a couple of different sets of plans on exactly what's in the ground at that intersection, what size of pipe and what size of valve. So um, just getting that scheduled so I could refine the scope of work on this project.
Okay.
But we're closing in. We're almost there. So next up, Commissioners is um, we're here to talk about and give a status on a request that we've had from Southside School District. And I see that Mr. Wenneke is on. I'm not sure if other Southside members are on here today as well. Um, but we have met on more than one occasion with the district to talk about their challenges for traffic control during the start and end of the school day. And have done survey work out there to figure out where the road lies within the alignment of the right-of-way, have um, had conversations with the school board about um, things that they've already done and Mr. Wenneke has done to help reduce conflicts and improve um, control out there on Collier Road. So they've done, taken steps such as making sure that folks are ride-sharing and people that can take the bus can take the bus and figure out how to stagger start and stop times or when they come and arrive, arrive and leave from school. So the district's done a nice job at looking at ways that they have control over um, to, to reduce the impacts. As I understand the challenges, um, there is concern about speeding both on Collier and also on Arcadia. And um, I know that recently um, the district reached out to the Sheriff's Department and some traffic enforcement has been happening out there. So that is definitely helpful. So, and that's the most appropriate thing to do, right? If we've got um, speeding is an issue, that some enforcement helps kind of take care of that as well. I do believe that it is appropriately signed in terms of speed. Um, but that said, I know that Dave and our team will be doing another throwing out our radar and doing another analysis, updating the analysis of what speeds are in the vicinity. And of course, updating accident history. That's all part of information that helps us um, determine what are appropriate measures to take in a, in an area. And if I could do a quickie screen share, Commissioners, if that's all right?
Please, go ahead.
Yep. And just to give you an idea. Let's see. So hopefully you can see right down here. Um, this is Collier Road. This is the entrance to the school. And in this map, you can see um, not the entire school, but the, the access and entrance. And then these blue lines is the, the edge of the right-of-way. And you can see that Collier is actually at some kind of strange skew within that right-of-way. It's not squared up within it. So one of the things that we did talk with the district about um, initially was to do some widening along the edge of the shoulder here. So that vehicles that were staging or waiting to enter into the school and drop off kids could be pulled off to the side. This would allow the regular traffic that had nothing to do with the school to continue by without some conflict there. Um, so that's one thing that we discussed.
Would you be doing that to the left or the right?
That was initially proposed on the right, so.
Is that, is that a residence right there?
That is a residence there, Commissioner, absolutely. Yep.
We could possibly be blocking, or people would end up blocking their driveway.
There, there would be concerns about that. There was some landscape. The um, the folks here were um, certainly amenable and definitely open to conversations.
What about the left?
They had some concerns as well, though, you know, things that they wanted to have addressed. And on the left side here, the most recent thing that we received from the school district was a suggestion to widen out on the left and then have a um, a right turn lane. And I believe that's what's being requested. And I'm not um, certain how that will help with conflict that may be occurring here. So that's part of what we're out to evaluate and see. Like, is the, the solution solving what the, the challenges here? And then if I could share one other map um, in the district's um, recent communication. Some time ago, we had also suggested um, a longer term type proposal. So the district has some property out here that comes out to Arcadia. That long-term, this would, this loop would eliminate conflicts um, and not require um, some of the, the situation that's happening right now. But certainly recognize that that's a process, right? Um, in terms of surpassing timber, um, working with um, whoever may be doing that work and, and constructing this, this access. But that's something that we um, suggested to the district as a, as a, basically the best solution. Right? Because all these other things that we're looking at are kind of Band-Aids and patches and, and may have minimal effect on improving um, the traffic challenges there. And then the, the traffic challenges occur for approximately fifteen minutes each day. And as I understand, the, the biggest impact is in the afternoon. And I think that's about all I have to summarize at this point. So we're we're reevaluating the, the most recent proposal and um, certainly want to work with the district in finding some low-cost solution, but I yeah, solutions are gonna be partial, I think. Um, until there's really a revamp of just the overall circulation here at the, at the school. And I realize that that takes some bigger dollars and perhaps a bond issue and larger, longer-term conversations with the, the community.
Commissioner Trask, is that your district or is it Kevin's?
Nope, that's mine. Um, I know Loretta and I drove out there, oh, it's been a while back. And uh, we do have we're scheduled to go and do a site visit, a, a traffic visit. Um, morning, or did we decide on the afternoon?
Yeah, we had originally pegged morning, and then um, Paul said, no, that's not the time to come take a look. So if we could reschedule, Commissioner Trask, that would be great. We'll figure out a time to go take a look in the afternoon.
All right, yeah, let's, let's do that. I want to give this a lot of attention. Those are, you know, our, our kids out there and um, want to make sure that, that they're safe, but also make sure that the, the neighborhoods are, are, are cared for and looked after. So let's, let's get that on the calendar. It might also be a good idea to um, invite someone from the Sheriff's Office to go with us. Um, just so that we can all be together, you know, uh, there's nothing like brainstorming to find a, a good solution.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um, so we can follow up. I'm either I know we had planned um, tomorrow morning. Um, so yeah, I can follow up about your availability, Commissioner.
Okay, yeah.
Actually, tomorrow afternoon works fine. Um. Or, or Wednesday.
I'm, I'm watching him shake his head yes and no. Uh, if you can take this down, I can see everybody's faces at the same time, though.
Tomorrow afternoon, I think that we have, we have Mason Transit tomorrow, so that, that would be, that would be difficult. So we might have to look at another day.
Okay. All right.
All right.
And Paul, we'd love, we, Paul, we'd love for you to, to, to join us. We'll let you know what time we're gonna be there, and then if you could join us, that'd be great.
Commissioner Shudy, any uh, comments or, or questions?
Uh, I'll, I'll just say this. I mean, I appreciate that, you know, we need to have ongoing conversation about what the, what the right approach is gonna be for this area. Um, you know, there's the threes that we always talk about, education, enforcement, and engineering. And it sounds like we're caught in some portion between at least two of those three uh, is being the right approach here. And so I'll wait to hear a little bit more after, after Commissioner Trask does her site visit and has, has an opportunity to be out there with uh, maybe the Sheriff's Office, Paul, maybe some of your folks from the school district, but um, you know, the, the engineering solution to this is a, is a long-term uh, long-term fix. And so maybe there's, there's some progress to be made on the enforcement side. So I'll wait to hear more after the, after the visit happens.
And as for myself, uh, I'm supportive for, of, of uh, also waiting for you to come back. Waiting for you to come back, Commissioner Trask, and what you have, but I want you to know, although I'm not usually a big fan of just spending money for. Different types of projects that may not be uh our project. I this I see this one as our project. The reason why is no matter what uh the reality is, the school's there. The reality is that people are parking on the street. The reality is. It's going to interfere with uh with uh people being able to access and move down that road. So reality is, we have to address it and uh expanding the access and allowing for people to park off of the roadside. Seems like a very easy, low hanging fruit way of protecting everybody that's involved. So with that being said. I look forward to all your options that that come forward. And I do remember this coming before us at a meeting as well. We were all very much in favor of. Of looking to see what can be done here. So uh I appreciate you bringing that forward. Alright, Loretta, what else do you have for us?
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. So next up, we have a request from the city of Bremerton. Thank you, Lovejoy. Um they sent a request for sewer service and an invitation from the mayor to begin. Talking about what service might look like. Um can we provide service? They were very specific in the amount that they're requesting. And so I wanted to bring this forward and um share some information. Commissioners also asked, well, what capacity do we have to serve? What's? What is our existing capacity and what might it look like? Um what do we need to be able to serve the UGA? So.
This is something that I have to question or or wonder. Uh are you asking for a support on the letter or are you asking to put together? Uh a group to start to speak with the mayor and have those discussions? Because that's two separate. Uh two separate issues, because a lot of the issues I have are that we don't have the answers to some of those questions. But if you have a, if you're looking at putting together something where the mayor would come together and and all start to look for some of the answers on that, that's a whole different. Uh position in my world and where I would look at it too. So which one are you asking for?
I'm simply sharing information this morning, Commissioner. Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do is again, share happy little map here, if that's okay.
Yep.
Uh where's my screen share now? Right there. Alright. So what you're seeing here, Commissioners, is um I'll zoom out a little bit for now, for the moment. Um this light black outline is the the urban growth boundary. So this is the the belfare sewer service area. And then what you see out here is the boundary of the southern Puget Sound Industrial Center vicinity. And um generally, the area that we have been talking with Bremerton for some time about. As the potential service area. And I'm gonna zoom in a little bit more. And get back to our current map. And this map, you can see the blue is indicating the connections that already exist to our system. And all the rest is unserviced at this time. You'll see an occasional little green. Um the map needs to be updated. But that indicates where folks have paid a connection charge generally. Um it's kind of a mix, but where there's a connection charge been paid and anticipating future connection. But essentially, I mean, the the big message here is we've got this core area along um the state route. Our new um homes and then the apartments should be shaded on here as well that are connected. And then the remainder of the UGA is presently unconnected. So um and then the the green here is our our wastewater treatment plant. The dots represent um pump stations that are on the existing system. So in terms of capacity, I'm gonna jump to another little quickie. Spreadsheet here. So we've got things, different factors that um allow us to serve. Or may limit our capacity. And right now, the the biggest limiting um issue is our spray field. So that is rated at point one two five MGD. And currently, we're at point oh seven eight. So that's what is running through the plant right now. And then we can easily serve at the treatment plant itself, point three seven five MGD. And again, we're at point oh seven eight. The request from Bremerton is point one six. That leaves about point one four. I'm kind of following this line right here, Commissioners. Point one four available. And that is approximately what we're estimating to be likely. To be needed as belfare grows in the next twenty years. I can't crystal ball that or predict, you know, precisely, but just knowing what we know. Today about potential development, that seems like a reasonable growth factor. That is not full build out of UGA at all. That's just what we're thinking is likely to happen. Over the course of the next twenty years.
Do you have a number for full build out?
Um the full build out, I don't have that right in front of me. I'm sorry, I should have pulled that up. But in our belfare planned action EIS, yes, Commissioner, we do have that full build out number. Um I want to say that we were undersized by about three times. Is that right, Richard?
Yep. So when you say you're undersized by three times, I'm a little confused. I'm trying to figure it out now. If the number that you're saying for a full build out, we built the plant, we built it for the belfer UGA. I kind of, we kind of should have that number before us, but even if we did have it, are you telling me that? We are underbuilt for our own our own use? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, we would still need to do some expansion if, given the new zoning. Within the belfer UGA, we would still need to plan for expansion. Absolutely.
So with the new zoning, we don't have the capacity any longer for what we have in our own system for what's the new zoning? Because I didn't catch up, we were going through that. I haven't heard that said. Are you shaking your head? Yes, is that a yes? That's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And and full build out includes all of the area, Commissioner Netherland, right? So areas that I'm not sure if the commissioner has a, the commission has a um interest in serving all of the areas within the service area. Um I know that there's been a lot of challenges off of the old belfer highway and some concerns about that. And so um I think that what. Went into Loretta's estimation of over the next twenty years, what do we see being developed? Well, it did not include providing service out to the old belfer uh uh off of old.
And that's a legitimate question. I'm not sure that we could ever get away with that. The state eventually is going to make make us do something, but. I'd like to see what the numbers look like for just the area that we rezoned. I don't remember that. And that's an interesting uh concept, so. If we feel fully build build out just the area that's rezoned, which is the idea or the hope. Uh when it was rezoned, we definitely need to have that number, please. Or I would, you can send it to me or the commissioner, however they want it.
Now now just the development of the area that we rezoned would not cause us to go over. It's if we act, if we served the entire service area. And all of those individuals hooked up to sewer, then with the rezoning in that area. It would be more than what we have capacity for.
No, and I understood that. I'm just actually curious of the number. Because we never had that discussion during the rezone, so I'd like to see what that number actually is. So I have it in my. In my memory banks for the future discussions, I think. I hadn't thought of it that way.
Yeah, sorry if I'm looking glazed here. I'm quickly seeing if I can pull that up.
Well, you can get it to me later. You don't have to read it at the moment.
Okay.
I just didn't realize I didn't have that until I realized I didn't have it in my head.
Yeah, actually, um just to, I'll do a quickie. Again, so this is from the Planned Action EIS Commissioners. And this was looking at different alternatives. Um and we ended up with alternative three. Slightly modified, so this is a bit higher than the numbers we actually ended up with.
Stay there for minutes. I'm still trying to take that in, please.
Yep. Yeah, I was just scrolling down. Is it large enough, Commissioners?
Yeah, I can I can read it.
Okay. Alright.
Take a picture of it, give me a minute.
And I'll I'll send this to you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So this um what we would need to do is back out, this this includes assumptions around serving the Puget Sound Industrial Center.
Well, you said that we wouldn't uh, that that was actually Mark. Mark, you just said though that we wouldn't be in that situation. With just that area added, but if I'm reading this right, it looks like we'd be at two hundred sixteen percent.
Well, that that's that's with this, these numbers that she has up there for serving PSEC.
Yep.
Which are different than what we're looking at.
Yeah.
What we're being asked for now, I think.
Yep. Yeah, so this this bottom line, basically, this this table would need to be updated based on the the Bremerton request.
Yeah, could you do that for us, please? Thank you.
Yep. And then we do um. Some time ago, the city had presented a draft of what would an interlocal agreement or a service agreement look like? We have collected drafts of um or not drafts, but existing documents that other communities. Who provide regional sewer service operate under. So we certainly have good examples. Um. So if that is a a desire of the commission, we've got. We've got a working base, basically, to to be able to start chewing on details. Um but the purpose of today was just to share information about what we have capacity wise. Um what we know and um be able to identify if. Commissioners have any other questions that we need to be able to answer. I think we've got at least one question from Commissioner Netherland. About updating this this table.
Actually, that that was just a request, uh.
Yep.
You know, there's, I, you, everybody knows there's issues I have with things, but I always look at everything again when it's re. Uh placed before me, but I definitely always have to have the actual information so I can. Make it an educated decision, regardless whatever uh that decision may be. Uh Commissioner Shitty, would you like to go first?
Yeah, thanks. Um first off, I I appreciate Mayor Wheeler uh sending the letter and and helping keep the conversation going. I I think we'd have. Some staff on here from the city of Bremerton as well, so I appreciate them making the time to to join us this morning. Um I'll just say, I think it would be appropriate for us to see a draft ILA to know how to move forward. Um I think. Given that uh Loretta, you mentioned that there's already been some discussion of of at least a draft or a shell ILA for us to consider. I'd like to see that by the end of this month so that we have an opportunity to, you know, decide how we want to move forward with uh with the city on this one. My main concern will kind of always be um losing access to the grant funding to do. Projects that are in our capital facilities plan. So what we've identified as a scope of work when we went to the legislature last year are things that. Regardless of a connection to PSEC are things that we need to be thinking about. Um as we continue to operate uh the belfer wastewater treatment facility. So. Having one point four million dollars in grant funding to do work that we're going to need to do over time anyway, I think is a real benefit to the county. Uh otherwise, if we lose the opportunity by not doing an ILA and going through that process. That's one point four million dollars that will eventually have to be borne by the ratepayers. It's so we have an opportunity here to do two things at once. One, we have an opportunity to explore what a partnership would look like with the city of Bremerton. But we also have an opportunity to uh provide uh engineering and design work uh that's paid for by the state and not paid for by. Ratepayers. So I want to make sure that that's kind of central to what we're thinking about when it comes to this. Um and in order to satisfy what the legislature has put in front of us, I think having an ILA in place that. Uh starts to put together what that potential relationship looks like makes a lot of sense. Um we could get through that process uh and, you know, maybe into the end of the fiscal year and decide that. Um maybe this isn't a good deal for the city of Bremerton, or this doesn't work for Mason County. That's totally fine, but I don't want to walk away from the one point four million in grant funding. Um that we would ultimately have to put on the ratepayers. So I would like to see an ILA by the end of this month so that we can start to make some of those decisions.
Kevin, can I ask you a question on what you just said? Uh if we if we're not using the that money is to to look at what the cost would be for the expansion. If we're not doing the expansion, if we decide not to do the expansion, how would that that weight be buried by the current uh rate pair?
Uh well, it's on the capital facilities plan that that the board has approved, that we've approved. And so it's projects that are going to have to happen over time anyway. And so I think this is focused not on construction, this is focused on design and engineering. Is that is that correct? To expand, you know, to figure out how we would expand the spray field into the future. So. Um I don't think that there's a shelf life necessarily on those types of plans, whether those expansions happen in five years or ten years. I think having one point four million in grant funding to do the design and engineering work is actually a good deal for the ratepayers in belfare versus. Just saying uh no, no expansion is going to happen right now, so then we have to go back to the drawing board, whoever it is. Over time to try to get that money back. I don't think that's, I don't think that's in the benefit of the ratepayers. So. That's where my head's at with it. We've approved a capital facilities plan. We found a way to put money towards that capital facilities plan, and so I think we should. Actually make good on that capital facilities plan.
I, if I could tag to that real quickly, um. We have a pre-app for a two hundred and fifty lot subdivision. If that proposal moved forward through the process, there was a preliminary plat approval. And we granted um basically, we said, we're going to serve. CFCs are paid. That alone would trigger the need to expand the spray field. So just to give you a sense.
Yes. Now, where is that located? In belfare or is that in Kitzachek County? What are you?
In in belfare.
Belfar, okay.
Yeah, so so if that were to move forward, we absolutely. Need to have money to design and go through the permit process. And um figure out what we're doing with the spray field.
So if if we approve that here, we're we're at our capacity of spray filled locally. For that, we've been expanding.
Correct.
Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, I think it's 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 very important that we get that. The ILA, I would love to see one. Um Commissioner Shitty is very eloquent in the way he speaks, and so I would like to to hear how he phrases things compared to how I would phrase things. And um but I think we're right, we're on the same. Um track, so to speak. What I'd also like to do is to make sure that um the city has heard back from the tribes. Make sure that we've got, you know, do we have their their letters? Because I know that I believe there were six tribes that were sent letters. Um I'd like to know if 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 those letters were received and what their um comments were. Um but I do know, and I and I've stated it often. That Mason County is our first priority, or it's my first priority. I want to make sure that that. We are able to serve who we need to serve and when we need to serve them. And um. So just making sure that 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 we're covered in this this one point, what was it, one point three, one point four? Million. That comes to Mason County for design, I think it's where we would miss out on a perfect opportunity to get this all planned. Um for future development. It's development's going to happen whether we want it to or not. And I would rather be prepared to to uh make sure that we can do that and and while protecting our environment. So um. I guess, long story short, let, let's get the I L A in front of us. So that we can see what, what, you know, what's, what the suggestions are.
So on the I L A, I would love to see, uh, what they're actually gonna be offering for a value of the capacity that they want from our plant. Are people paid for all that, and I'd like to see what, uh, what value they'd wanna. Pay, because, uh, there was a big burden that was taken, so please make sure that, and I agree that, uh, I'd like to see what the tribes actually had to say. Like, see if it's in the comprehensive plan. Uh, I do want to remind everybody, which I'm sure you already know, but, uh, it, uh. If you're in a, in a situation where somebody's asking you to sign on the dotted line first, before you know what you have to. To build, what you have to pay for, and whether you can afford to even keep it and provide for your own family. They want you to sign the dotted line, giving away a percentage of what you have, I think that's always a mistake. We need to establish what we have first, what we need first, before we talk about signing an, an agreement, giving away capacity. That's just my, my two cents, but we'll see that as the I L A comes forward. Uh, anything other than, uh, anything else on any of that?
Are you thinking those would be deliverables in an I L A, or?
Well, yeah, well, if you're gonna enter into an I L A, you wanna, uh, actually know what you're agreeing to somehow. You know, you're not just putting out there, if, if they would accept an I L A that have intentions on this, that's one thing, but I have a feeling. What I've seen in the past, or what they're asking for is for an actual deliverable, what we will do. What we will give and provide. And that means we have to enter into an agreement before we get the money to find out what we have for capacity, what it's gonna cost to fix it, and what it's gonna cost to create it. And that never makes any sense to me, but we'll deal with that when the time comes, I'm not gonna stand in the way of an L A, uh, I L A, let's look and see what it looks like first. And then see if I have any questions, uh, after that, for myself.
Loretta, it, uh, I think, thanks, Commissioner, um, Loretta, is there, is there language from Commerce about what? Um, the deliverables are, the scope of work for our side of this?
Um, they're, they're working on the draft scope, yes, yeah, and then there's also the terms of the. Um, the grant itself, itself, and that is one of the conditions, is that Commerce. Wants assurance that if they're going to be paying for a design. That in theory is also serving the city of Bremerton, that we have an agreement and a commitment to serve. So that's one of the, the conditions of the Commerce Grant, and that's why. The city is pressing also is that, look, time's ticking for us to be able to execute. Uh, this grant, and if this is a box that we need to check before the grant is executed. Then we need to get going on, on having a conversation about entering into the I L A.
So do you, do you, you can get us a draft for review in two weeks, you think that's?
We have a draft, yes, yeah.
Do you wanna do it next week, or?
Um.
No.
No.
No, I have not, I have, I haven't seen that yet, so I would love to, to get, to give him some details of that, and.
Yeah.
To have it done by Wednesday in order to get it for briefing on the twenty first, that's not realistic.
Yeah.
But you do think the twenty eighth is realistic?
I do. It won't be necessarily fully vetted on our side in terms of what our comments are or reviews, but it's. You can see a draft, and you can see other examples, and that'll be a great starting point for us to. Get chewing on.
Why, Commissioner, why would we not want to have one that's fully vetted first?
Well, I'm just, I'm asking that question, I mean, I, I just am curious, it's, we have a draft, I don't know what, what, why we're not. I don't know why Mark isn't involved in those conversations, or. Like what it takes to vet those, I mean, I just. I'm asking because it sounds like we've had some conversations at the staff level about. What an I L A would look like, I mean, we've, this money was appropriated, what, six, seven months ago, and. You know, the, the fact of the matter is, uh, you know, we continue to drag our feet on these things, and we hear, hear things like, why? I don't know, I haven't had enough conversation about that, and I just like, I just don't know why that's the case, I mean. If, if somebody came to you and said, hey, I got one point four million dollars for you to do. X, Y, and Z, would you take seven months to take advantage of that, or do you think you would maybe work a little bit harder and make priorities? You know, align with getting some of those things in front of the commission to make those decisions?
Uh, if you're asking me, I would always rather wait until I, I know that all the best answers I can get first. I've, if, one thing we all know, when it's not our own project that we like, we all know to be afraid, anytime somebody offers you grant money, because it doesn't mean that it's free, money's always free. There's things that come with it, weights that come with it, and dangers that come with it, so having it fully vetted is always best to me. Uh, I'm not saying that, uh, it shouldn't have been done earlier, because we both know I have, if this was a different project, I'd probably be saying the same thing, Commissioner Shudy, so. I want to be honest about that, uh, so with that being said, what, let's at least do the best we can to vet the best we can and bring it to us, and. That's what's being requested, at least that's what I'm hearing right now, and I think Commissioner Trask has. Said in her statement that she agrees with Commissioner Shudy on that. So, yeah, she's shaking her head, so the, I think that's what's being asked for, so if that is, that's what I, I'm asking for on the behalf of, of the commission itself, so. We'll bring up.
Yeah, I think, Commissioner, I think just to clarify what I'm asking for is, I'm okay, just to, I wanna see a draft of this, I wanna see kind of what the. General nature of the conversation has been like at the staff level, what are the things that Bremerton views as important? In an I L A versus the things that three of us view as important in an I L A. I'm not saying that we need to sign the I L A on the twenty eighth, I'm just saying that, uh, you know, to use a phrase that, that you've used often is, uh. Letting the perfect be the enemy of the good, let's just get the conversation moving. Um, July thirty of twenty twenty five is gonna be here before any of you know it. Um, and I don't, I, I just, past practice has been just really concerning about how we get things out the door. And it's not just us on the hook for this, um, it's also, it's also Bremerton that's on the hook for this, and so I think. We just need to be respectful of what they need as well, uh, in terms of getting the most value out of the grant funding that they got to do their work. Um, or cut, you know, cut bait and move forward, I mean, I just, I just don't know why we would let these things drag on the way we do.
Well, I don't know that we're the ones holding them up, uh, Loretta, is it even in the comprehensive plan yet?
No, and that's also kind of a chicken and egg thing, Commissioner, because. Why would the city update a comprehensive plan to say that we are going to serve them if we have not made a commitment to serve? Right?
We do, we put things on a comprehensive plan that we are hoping to do, not always what we have in our hand.
Yeah.
You can't do it without it being in your comp plan, that chicken and egg doesn't make sense on this one, if it's a big project, you want it in your comp plan first. Before going after funding, usually. That's how we do it.
Yeah, so they're in the process right now of going through the comp plan updates, similar as we are, and that is. Part of what will be included is my understanding, I'm sorry, I don't have a. But somebody from the planning side of things here, but that's my understanding.
So you'll bring it to us, though, either way, we'll have it brought to us, and we'll start to look it over and see what we can come up with, and have our discussions then. Is that, uh, what I'm hearing from the commission, again? Okay, so, so let's make that happen and find out.
Oh, I just wanna, I wanna clarify something here, the discussions that we've had at a staff level. Is based on how do we define the capacity that we have available, if we have capacity available. So the study has been looking at. Here's our service area. Want to make sure the commissioners kind of understand going into it, that if you're gonna say, hey, I'm never gonna serve this area, then I don't have to reserve any capacity for that.
And we can't say that.
You could say that, hey, we don't think we're gonna serve this area in the next twenty five years.
Yeah, that we could say.
And so if you're not gonna serve it within the next twenty five years, then. Then, then you have to make a decision, do you really wanna reserve that much capacity for twenty five years, or would you like to utilize it now? In providing additional services to Bremerton. And, but I, I would like to, I would like to kind of have an understanding, because what I've heard back from at least two commissioners, very specifically. Was. What is the capacity, and, and do we have? Capacity to serve development that happens within Belfair before we go to do Bremerton? So if I'm. We, we can start discussing what an I L A looks like, and we can start to discuss the components of that. Just want to make sure that you guys are all comfortable with, um. I, our Commissioner Chudy, are you saying that you want a specific volume within that I L A that we're willing to provide?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying whatever meets the minimum requirements to release the money from Commerce.
Oh, just.
I think this is, there's, there is, there is a lot of discussion that has to happen about. You know, the details of what sprayfield expansion looks like for us, what do we need, what do they need? And I'm saying you guys have spent a lot of time having a capacity conversation with yourselves. And not necessarily having that conversation in any formalized way. That A protects our interests and B helps understand what Bremerton. Truly needs, we have a letter here from the mayor, which is, which is super helpful. It says, over a twenty year planning period, we're gonna need a hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day. Over twenty years, does that mean that they're gonna ramp that up over, over, over the twenty years, is that? Eight thousand gallon per day increase every year for the next twenty years? Or is it, you know, uh, is it, we're gonna get one project that's eighty thousand gallons per day in year three? Right, so there's, like, we need to get out of our own way on these things, and if we're gonna have a conversation with, with another jurisdiction. Then we need to go formalize how that process looks, that's what I see the I L A doing. The I L A gives you the flexibility to go in and say, hey, these are the concerns that my three commissioners have. They're worried about capacity, and they're worried about the future service of the Belfair U G A. Bremerton can say, okay, yeah, we get that, because we've faced similar issues within our jurisdiction, here's what we think is a reasonable way forward on that. Here's what we think the value of that is, here's how we think that it all gets funded. Here's what we think Mason County should think about in terms of, you know, how they do, you know, expand their facilities, whatever it is. The I L A is the framework, I think, that authorizes a formal conversation between the two jurisdictions. I don't think at this point that an I L A needs to commit either jurisdiction to any one particular. Path forward here, like I said, Bremerton might take a look at it and say, hey, too steep for us to do it this way. We're gonna look at another alternative, thanks Mason County. This is exactly what happened with the gel study that I talked about a few years ago, we went into the gel study with Graves Harbor County thinking, hey. This is the best thing since sliced bread, we're gonna find all kinds of economies of scale, and what happened? We're doing a second gel study that doesn't include anybody but us, so to think that we have a structured, you know, formalized agreement to have a conversation. You know, is anything other than that, um, I think is a little bit premature, I think there's still a lot that has to find, I'm concerned about the capacity conversation too, it's not just two of the commissioners, it's all three of us. We have to be able to figure out what we need to do within Ma- Mason County first and foremost. But once we have these kinds of conversations in a formalized way with the city, then we're able to plan better on our side of the county line as well. We also have an idea then what might be happening on their side, it just helps all of us, so. I, I don't know that I would, I would, you know, get into a position here where this I L A is. You know, like on the fifteenth day of the month, we're gonna provide X amount of gallons per day, you know, like, don't do that to yourselves. Build us a framework where we can have those policy level discussions, and then, you know, figure out how we move forward over time.
And along that line, Commissioner, uh, you know, we may battle back and forth at different things, but I try real hard to. Even if anybody don't agree, is that I try real hard to give in on certain areas to try and find a way to work together as a team. If there is no guarantee involved, uh, and we're just trying to find a way to do, uh, an open ended agreement so we can move forward, you're gonna end up with my support. Or, even though I don't agree with it, but that's how we sometimes work together. So I'm telling you that just right up front, if we can find a way to do it without that, there's been a lot of work went into this. Uh, Commissioner Trask, actually, I'm gonna give you great credit, I was very much, uh, against that last one we did, then you took it with, uh, Loretta, you revamped it. And you came this close to getting, uh, uh, an actual action agenda item passed, but a, a citizen pulled it off, and then I couldn't. With any good conscience, say, I, I agree, but I would have voted to just to do it as an action agenda, because you did such a good job. Of putting stuff in there that protected the county and left us in a situation where we didn't have to. We were, we have, uh, you, you were showing your intentions of the stuff, but there was a lot of protections there, if that happens in this situation. I don't have an intention of, uh, of fighting and killing it off, Commissioner Shudy, I just wanted you to know that. I just appreciate everybody's work on it, and I do not agree, but at the same time, we have to find ways to work together, and, and. We don't always agree, but when it's all done and said what we always sign the papers, all three of us, at least I do, even when I vote no, so. Anything further on that?
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Please.
Since the conception or the design or the build of the Belfair, a sewer system. Hasn't P S I C been a part of that discussion? Or, or a part of that plan, because I seem to remember, and I got the notebook right over here, that when we. Um, talked about it, or when it was taught, not us, but in previous years, wasn't P S I C part of that conversation then?
Not in the beginning, uh, matter of fact, the community went to war at that time, and, and Tim Sheldon then came out and said, no, Kitsap was not part of it, we're not building for that. After a point, though, when we were so backwards, I'm involved with this, I was part of it, uh, we were looking to take in the, the, uh, port. Properties, uh, and take on their customers, because there was a huge customer base to take on before we found ways to, to do things. Eventually, the port said no, and now it's become speculation, uh, and into different areas, so. In the beginning, no, in the middle, yes, uh, for the area by the port, and then now. A whole different thing that we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that, that we're. That, that we're doing what's right for Mason County, and, um, I agree with Commissioner Shudy, we, we've gotta get this, this going, the, the legislate. Are, are the legislators, the legislation, well, the legislators, they're not patient. And, and so if we don't move on something, they're going to pull it back. A budget season is coming up for them as well, and so we need to be. Need to be on our best game, so let's, let's do what we need to, to get something out there.
So, Loretta, one of the things for the close on this for myself, I'd like a full breakdown of what the full build out is, I'd like to have that number. Set next to a number that shows the expected build out for Mason County in, in the twenty years. Uh, so that those are all same together, I'd like to also see some type of value. Of, if we're gonna give a percentage of, uh, entity that we own to somebody else, I'd like to see what that value is, and what we might wanna charge in order to. Sell that capacity to somebody, not just a monthly, because there's no, there's no benefit, uh, to the people that paid into it, I'd like to see what an actual value would look like. Whether anybody agrees to pay it is one thing, I'd like to see what that looks like. And then let's bring it forward, and let's have that discussion. Anything, anything else, Commissioners, on that issue? Nope, nope, we're good, what else you got, Loretta?
Um, other than that, just a couple of quickie updates, Commissioners, we've got, um. A planned ribbon cutting on November seventh, still to nail down, um. Invites and the time, I did hear from Commerce saying that. Afternoon would be better, because they have some folks that would be traveling quite a distance, so, um. We'll get that, get that on your radar, and then November twenty fourth is a Russell Wood Homeowners Association meeting. Happy Sunday afternoon, so we'll be going out and meeting with the Russell Wood community, and Commissioners, you all have an invite to that, but. Um, let us know, and we'll, um, we'll move forward on that. And then just a couple of follow up items, the, the bridge, the bridge is clean again, the Wallace Neeland underpass. So the D O T crews, bridge crews, we're out getting rid of the graffiti there. Uh, um, Shetland Road, the, I passed four trucks and trailers this morning. Hauling rock, so Shetland Road is getting rocked for the next couple days, and. We are doing our best to get that thing chip sealed, so the oil part, not sure about yet, but, um, rock is, rock is being hauled. And let's see, Mike's out inspecting today, um, doing some bridge inspection work, the. U bit was scheduled with D O T, so that's happening. And I think that's about it for just some quickie updates, Commissioners.
Well, there's one thing I have not heard on there, and I think maybe it has fallen through the cracks, which is sad. But the commission had, uh, directed, uh. Public Works and Roads to prepare a meeting and start to introduce the R I D concept to Razor Road in October. I haven't heard anything mentioned, so did that fall through the cracks?
Nope, I know that Mike and team have been looking at that as well, Commissioner, but I don't think we have a, anything on the calendars for sure.
I'm gonna say we're halfway through the month.
Yep.
If you don't have it, uh, then it probably isn't going to happen is what I'm guessing. And I definitely don't want to throw something this important out there. Half heartedly or, or hazardly, half hazardly, because this is too important for too many people and too many areas surrounding it. But I do remember the commission did task you with doing that in a certain. Timeframe. We originally were thinking earlier, but we thought it better to give more time in order to do it. So please keep that in mind.
Yep.
All right, anything uh, more for Loretta commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner, just um, one thing, Loretta. So. At our next, um, in our next uh, section of briefings under Support Services, we're gonna be talking about. A letter of support for the, well, two letters of support, both uh, on the utility side, one for the city and then one for the salmon enhancement group. Um, and so I was just wondering if you would maybe be able to just hang around, um, as part of that conversation. Um, cause I. Uh, I'm pretty familiar, obviously, with the city one, but with the salmon enhancement group, I, I might have a couple of questions.
I might have a couple of questions too on that. So, but yes, definitely. Richard and I will stick around on that. I know that Richard had been having some communication with the salmon enhancement group about potential service. To them, so, yep.
Yeah, perfect. All I got.
Hey, Commissioner Trask, anything? All right, thank you, Loretta.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, Mark. Looks like uh, you're up next with Support Services. First of all, whoever you're sinful, whoever brought that check mix, I'm so addicted to it, I just can't stop and. I apologize to all the public, but it's here in my face and it just calls at me constantly. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mark.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
It was good. I had some too. Thank you.
I brought a bowl.
I believe I'm up first, so I just have a request to set two different public hearings. One is for the twenty twenty five levies on Tuesday, November nineteenth. And the other is on um, the, to set the public hearing for the twenty twenty five budget adoption. Um, or to consider budget adoption on um, Monday, December second.
I'm supportive, commissioners.
Yep.
I am as well.
You got it all the way around.
That's all that I have today.
Thank you. Mark. You're muted, Mark.
Thank you. Just looking at a different screen, didn't see that. So the next item we have on the agenda is the Peninsula Services request. So we received a request from Peninsula Services. Um, for the county to donate surplus land. Uh, located at the intersection of US one oh one and SR one oh two. And so the, if I could actually share my screen real quick here. Show you a map of it. So this is the map here. It's these parcels here that are owned by Public Works, actually. And um, Peninsula Services is wanting to build low income housing in this area. And was wondering if the commission would be interested in donating that land to them. So I've given the commissioners, this is a, this is a piece of property that's active property that we've been looking at and what to do. Um, if you have any questions for Holly, she's here. Uh, if you don't, then um, we can definitely, I can follow up with Holly afterwards. Um, I know that the commission is very interested in helping. Peninsula Services create. Affordable housing opportunities for individuals within the Mason County area. I'm just not sure if this is the area that we would choose first. Um, but uh, yeah, if you have any questions or.
I do for you, Mark. We'll just correct you. Currently, we have some action already on that property, so correct? And with, yeah, and with that already being on there, if we were to have done this and move forward, we, we would have to pay for it. Uh, just like anybody else out of the general fund into the road fund. So I'd have to take several million dollars and. And pay the road fund in order for us to be able to do that.
Yeah, I've recently gotten an updated appraisal on this property because we have had interest in it from uh. Commercial development side of things. And I think the zoning of the, that area is a little bit different than, than what is presented here from Peninsula. Um, but definitely wanted to bring this before the commission and the public and, and make you aware that Peninsula Services is interested in. And getting some land from Mason County.
Yeah, great organization, proud of them. I'm not sure this is the right one. Uh, Commissioner Shu.
Yeah, no, excited to partner with uh, Peninsula Services on doing some housing projects in Mason County and. Um, if it's not these parcels, then we'll definitely keep an eye out for opportunities to partner with them on, on other parts of the county and. I know that they've had some conversations with the city of Shelton as well. Uh, and so hopefully there's something that breaks loose in, in. Either the city or out in the county. I think it's a great opportunity.
Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent and um. We do need more housing. Um, and so I, I appreciate that, cause we were just talking about the Belt Fair Sewer. The housing area up there, yeah, it's gonna provide a lot of new homes for people to, to um, live in, which opens up other homes. So it's, it's a cascading event, I guess. So, but I do look forward to working more with Holly and, and finding, you know, looking at other properties and um, also with the city.
You know, commissioners, perhaps here in the very near future, we can have a discussion about uh, what it would look like to bring in true low cost. And maybe some exemptions uh, for uh, sewer hookups and the like, cause the amount is excruciating, excruciatingly high. Uh, I know I want to have that same conversation with you regarding other facilities like schools and uh, uh, health facilities. Um. There's a uh, mental, we know a uh. An Alzheimer's group that was looking to put in a facility up north, but uh, the. Three hundred and fifty thousand is just too much for them to, to utilize. So maybe we can have that conversation in the near future. Future about breaks that we can give for entities like this and like uh, other essential uh, things like schools and hospitals and stuff. Regarding our hookups.
Right, well, and I think as we, as we grow, so do our schools. So, you know, the growth is inevitable, plus there's impact to our roads and things like that. So it's not. It's not just an easy fix. There's, there's a lot to this puzzle that we have to work out.
Yep. All right, thank you. Uh, what else you got, Mark?
So the next item, if you don't have any other questions for Holly, it sounds like not. I, Holly, I can definitely, thank you for. For sticking around and listening to the discussion. Um, be happy to talk with you later. So if you wanna shoot me an email, we can start a conversation there. Uh, the next item that I have on my agenda is a um, a layout here. I think that this is a. Request from the Mason Conservation District. Who is working with the department, uh, or working with our, our salmon center. Uh, to apply for a grant through the Department of Ecology to install a membrane bioreactor. Um, so this is a, a new sewer system for the salmon center. Um, I think that this is, I guess when I first looked at this. The question I ask is why wouldn't they hook up to our Belt Fair Sewer? Um, but so I, I'm, I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but maybe Loretta or Richard could, could um.
Loretta, Ri- Richard, are you on right now? I used to see your faces. I know Commissioner Shu, he asked you to stay. Are you available to answer Mark's question?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Richard because he's had the most conversations with um, with the salmon center. There we go.
Yeah, actually, I, I had a, a uh. A meeting scheduled with the salmon center a couple of months ago to come out and look at, at hooking up. And it was just, it was canceled. And I hadn't heard back from him until, until just now. Uh, this is the, the latest. Uh, update that I've gotten is that they're planning on doing a membrane or, or, or looking at doing that. Um, they are outside of the UGA. So that, that might be one difficult, difficulty for them.
But they had a failing system, correct?
That's right.
Yeah, I. Um, our preliminary conversations with uh, Mindy about that was that since it was a failing system, that that was something that we could consider. So um, it would probably take amending what the service area boundary was and. Um, allowing that. And then I know that. There was some work on their part in looking at securing easements. So that they could connect to our sewer system. And.
I think they, they worked that out, cause it was with, with uh, either Fish and Wildlife or Department of Transportation has the property that's in between. Uh, their property and State Route three, and there is a uh, a service lateral there available.
Actually, uh, there was a private enterprise that they were working with. It wasn't either of those, uh.
Okay.
And I, maybe I shouldn't disclose, cause I, I know publicly, uh, or I know from other reasons, but there's an entity there that had property that they were negotiating.
Correct.
In order to get through. I, I, but I'm not in a position to say. Who or what or how.
Yeah, yeah, there was definitely a private property owner that, um, was my understanding was. Willing and um, agreeable. So. We've, we've got some missing, missing links there. So maybe something happened in terms of being able to provide service or. Get that access, or maybe for some reason that route didn't pencil out. Um, had some challenges, but um, that's, that's what we know.
Okay, I wanna fill you in, Mark, on where this came from and how it came about. I got a phone call the other day. Uh, I think it was even on Friday or something, could have been Thursday. Uh, t- telling me that this was out there and is there a way to have that conversation? I said, uh. Well, I know in the past we have done things where we've let Mark Mary be the one to sign on our behalf. This way it doesn't have to wait for. Uh, signature from the actual commission. I knew she was saying there was some deadline. I don't exactly remember what it was she was saying, but it was right away. Uh, I do know in the past, many years ago, and this is back to the days when I was battling them and stuff, uh, they put in a. A sewer, a septic system that was experimental. Uh, they were doing stuff with chips, like wood chips and stuff like that, back in the days of uh. Of Norm Dick's and stuff, and this was gonna be the wave of the future. Hate to say it, but now it's so many years later, it could have just failed from lack of old, from old age, I guess. I keep forgetting how quickly these years just. Travel. But that's all it was from my side, is they just had that request, I asked them send it in. And get it to NC if it, if it uh, was something that the commission was willing to even consider or look at. I don't even know enough about it honestly to, to even help you by uh. By telling you what, what all it is. So.
Yeah, so it appears that they, this is a, the Mason Conservation District is wanting to apply for a grant. Um, and they would like a letter of support from Mason County. Uh, the, the application is due tomorrow. And I believe that is probably why the deadline was so. Um, so soon and they, they chose this, this process to go through to request the. Commission give me the authority to sign the letter of support. Um, apparently this membrane bioreactor sewer treatment. Is um, is something that, that would. Benefit them in the sense that they could add that to their educational opportunities for individuals that visit the salmon enhancement center. To show them how um, to properly treat in such a sensitive area. And so that's from my review of, of this real quickly, that's what I got out of it and. Um, I can definitely follow up with them. Not sure if this, they're gonna be successful with this request. Um, but. Do you wanna hear back from the board whether you are comfortable with me signing this letter of support?
Well, I still have one question that I would have. It's not, it's not a pretty question, but it's one we always ask for everything else. Do we have any competing grants against it?
Not that I'm aware of.
Richard, it doesn't, Richard, are you saying we do?
Well. Uh, there's a couple of potential competing things. Um, if they are successful and they construct an MBR. Um, they will need somebody to operate that. And as you know, we've got challenges keeping our own operators and, um, and that's a statewide. That's a statewide issue.
I know, but that, that's not what I'm talking about, Loretta.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, commissioners, that those are things that, um.
To not support.
That I would be considering. And then in terms of, we don't have a current grant application, no. Um, we do not.
Uh, Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, Mark, did they, did they give you a, a, a draft letter to sign? And in that draft letter, does it state? I mean, it has something and they're saying that, that. If, if the design isn't appropriate. Then they don't get the grant. You know what I mean? If it's not, if it's not approved. Um, environmentally, how, it, it, can they still get the money? You know, what liability do we have? If they do get the grant, we said that we supported it.
I, I did not get that out of the, out of anything, that, any of the information that I have. Um, the grant that they're implying for is, uh, is definitely for the, the design construction. And education and outreach associated with operating an MBR. But yeah, I did not get anything.
Well, and, and I know that both groups or neither group is going to do something that's going to, to harm. The environment and the head canal, or the, the salmon center is, is a great place for, to go for it, for education. I know it's part of the. North Mason School District's plan. They can even, I don't know that they walk down there, but they do have areas where they can walk and, and look at the. Um. The beauty of Mason County, right? And, and how to manage things. So I would, I would feel comfortable with you signing it. Um, but I would ask that they keep us updated as to whether, you know, how it's, how it's progressing, whether they receive the grant. Um, and if they did. How are they moving along?
I, I could agree with that myself. Commissioner Shu, where are you at?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm supportive as well, I guess, at this point. I mean, just for the purposes of the, the grant. Um, I do think that there needs to be more conversation between us and the Conservation District and the Salmon Group. Um, on the planning side, as we are going through our co- um, comprehensive plan update. Um, part of their land uh, is in the urban growth area, a part of it isn't. Um, and so it'd be interesting to know what their thoughts are, um, you know, about bringing the other parcels into the UGA so they could access. Our facility versus building their own facility. I, I just, I. I, it's just from a. Facility management perspective, I'm not, I don't, I don't know how their, what their plans are with that. There's not a whole lot of detail associated with this. Request, um. And they don't, they don't operate an MBR system, so I, you know. Um, so I'm, I'm okay signing it now, but I think there needs to be more conversation with DCD and Public Works about. Kind of what the future looks like, um, so that we're. Partnering with them on things and not. Um, creating any kind of unnecessary duplication.
Yeah, commissioners, uh, Ian has uh, raised his hand on this, even though he's not part of the communication that we're doing. His department definitely would have a great say in this. Are you comfortable with me allowing him in the conversation?
Yes.
Okay, please, Ian.
Um, I just wanted to let you all know that I've been speaking to Evan Gatter about this. Um, and the MBR system is just a fancy septic system. It's not like a sewage treatment plant, so it wouldn't really be a competing system. It's just. A very high end septic system, a very expensive septic system. Um, and they have also proposed to write Mason County Environmental Health into this grant application. To disperse uh, septic rebates to encourage septic maintenance as well, so, um. There's a potentially thirty uh, septic rebates being written into this grant, um, if their, if their application is successful. And um, also Dave has written a letter of support for their grant application on behalf of Mason County Public Health.
Oh, well.
That's just.
Our work here is done.
That's just the.
What more do we need to do? Dave's on it.
I. I'm just gonna leave it right there. Commissioners. Are, uh, are, is, is everybody still, yes?
I am. I like the idea of, of having grants to help people fix their septics too, so. But I guess that's, that's a bonus.
Okay, Commissioner Shu, you're still there?
I am.
Okay, uh, Mark, uh, I think we're giving you the permission to go ahead and move forward and sign that and, and get that off of them. I'll let them know that in the future though, uh, more time is appreciated. More uh, lead time.
Absolutely. So that's all the, the formal updates I had for you. It looks like Commissioner Discussion there includes a city Shelton's connection chip grant.
Who's got that one?
Yeah, I'll take that. Uh, so the city is uh, looking to potentially apply for. Um, some utility funding from Commerce that would help extend um, to a project in, um, in the unincorporated urban growth area. Um, so just looking for a letter of support uh, for their project. Um, I'm not sure. The timing of it, I'm not, I'm, we, there's a lot of work that has to happen, so hopefully they can get it in by the end of this month when it's due. Um, but based on our schedule and the timing of everything, um. Now is the right time to get it in front of us for action next week, so.
That gives me the opportunity to ask questions. That gives me the opportunity to ask questions. So I don't look so bad on the last time I asked it. Are there any, uh, competitive, uh, competing grants on our side that we could be interfering with?
There are not. So this is specifically for affordable housing projects. And so um, they, they have a, a project that, uh, is in, like I said, the unincorporated UGA that, um, would like to take advantage of the planned unit development uh, code amendments and tap into the city's utilities. And so um, it seems like this would be a good opportunity to, to do that. Um, we do not have anything coming from the county that would be a competitor in this grant fund.
Then I'm supportive, Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, no, it sounds great.
Okay. So Kevin, let me ask you this. Are you better off? I'm sorry. Are you better off waiting, Ken, Kevin, and having the commission sign this one? It's always much more powerful than the commission, does it?
Oh, that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for this to go on action for the 22nd.
Then yes, I agree. You, you have agreement all the way around. Mark, did you have something you wanted to add on that?
I know I can follow up with Commissioner Shu after this meeting.
Okay. Any other, uh, Commissioner discussion? I almost forgot I was supposed to continue the meeting. Uh, with that, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great one, everybody.
See you tomorrow.
Okay.